Tuesday, April 14th, and this is a regular meeting of the Austin City Plan Commission. We have public hearings, sign appeal, and offense appeal on the agenda tonight. Before we do that, I will ask if the commissioners have had a chance to look at the minutes from our meeting, our last meeting, and if there are any revisions, changes on the minutes.
Those were sent out separately, so if somebody's missing the minutes...
Yeah, they were sent separately.
Did you get them? Okay.
Okay, if there are none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Bremner to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The first item on our agenda, then, is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the comprehensive plan which would change the land use designation of the future land use map from an open space parks area to a high-density residential area.
Helly.
This petition is brought by the Hormel Foods Corporation. I'm, uh, I kind of combined them in the packet, but it's a request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use plan pursuant to Minnesota statutes 462.352 and In order to, there's some interest in developing that property, and in order to rezone, we have to also look at the comprehensive plan and make sure that that is in agreement with the rezoning. At this time, the current use of the property is, and I should say, the subject properties are located in this area here, 2207 and 2107, 8th Drive Northeast, Austin. These properties were annexed into the city of Austin as R1 residential in December 2000. The current use is as open area and a pre-existing non-conforming corporate sales cabin located in this area, used for events and training for up to 115 people. The surrounding land use and zoning classifications are very diverse. Most of these uses are within maybe a quarter of a mile or more, other than the, we have some industrial here, we have Todd Park up here, there's some residential further to the north, there's some residential to the south of the Hormel Annex, and then this would be some Hormel property to the south here, and then International Paper. The existing future land use designation on the comprehensive plan is open space and parks at this point. The proposed future land use would be changing from open space parks to high-density residential. And I'll just go through the, basically, the highlights in the, in the statutes. The procedure to adopt or amend includes that the planning agency may recommend to the governing body the adoption and amendment from time to time of a comprehensive municipal plan. Before adopting the comprehensive municipal plan, or any section or amendment of the plan, the planning agency shall hold at least one public hearing thereon. Unless otherwise provided by charter, the governing body may, by resolution, adopt and amend the plan or portion thereof as the official municipal plan upon such notice and hearing. The parts of our comprehensive plan which relate to this proposed plan amendment are the, basically, the, the vision statement of what is a plan, and it says it should be understood that a comprehensive plan is not a rigid set of rules by which Austin must make its growth decisions over the next 10 or 20 years. Rather, it is a framework intended to guide development, a measuring point from which proposals, opportunities, and discussions can be evaluated. So that will be your role here to do some evaluation of whether this would be appropriate, inappropriate use for this particular piece of property. In this instance, in other instances, the high-density residential areas have been expanded to encourage the development of multifamily and mixed-use neighborhoods with higher densities. And then there are some specific goals in our comprehensive plan that we've seen before, which are to encourage the reuse and redevelopment of land within the current city limits, encourage the development of multifamily and mixed-use neighborhoods with higher densities under the following criteria, which would be adjacent to major arterial collectors, adjacent to areas of employment, adjacent to areas of commercial activity, and to act as a transition from more intensive land use types, which would be commercial or industrial, to less intensive land use types would be, which could be single-family residential. Also, the city is encouraged to continue to promote the recruitment of new targeted industries to the community. And you have included in your packets the future land use map, I just put two white Xs on here to show where, where they were located in this green area, which is the The staff recommendation would be for you to take into consideration that the current land use classification, the R1, is something that is just automatically given to any land that comes into the city by annexation. By ordinance, we make it an R1, which is the least, which is the most restrictive, so we can kind of control development from there. Over the past 15 years, nothing has been done to change that land use designation. If you look at the surrounding area, you should consider what would be appropriate use for that parcel. And I would also add that the sales cabin building right now is classified, would be classified as a non-conforming use. There is an intent to, for that cabin to stay in that area. Doing a comprehensive plan amendment and then rezoning would bring that into compliance. And there has been an intent, or interest has been shown in developing that, that parcel into some perhaps research and development. There would also be a limitation in development because of the flood zone here, so any development would have to take place outside of that area. So there would still be some considerable green space left. Do you have any questions? And then Chad Sales, one of the engineering team from Hormel, is here. If you have any further questions that he might be able to answer. You would be making a recommendation to the city council as to whether to adopt the amendment.
I recommend that we do adopt the change from R1 to R0.
Actually, at this time, it would just be the comprehensive plan amendment.
Oh, okay.
So from open parks, recreational, to high-density residential.
Okay.
It is kind of confusing because both matters deal with the same parcels.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there anyone, I should have asked, is there anyone who wants to speak to the commissioners? Okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Bremner to move forward at this point.
I'll second that.
Second from Commissioner Helling. Any other discussion at all? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is another open public hearing to consider requests from Hormel Foods, 1101 North Main Street, Austin, Minnesota, 55912, to rezone their property located at 2207 and 210, 2107, 8th Drive Northeast, from R1 Single Family Residence District to an R0 multi-family residence office district, bringing a current non-conforming use into conformance and to further develop the property. So this goes hand in hand with what we just...
Yes, so the backup, so most of the backup material is the same. The request now is to, to change the R1 designation to R0, which is from single-family residence to multi-family residence office district. The, this area is surrounded, again, by residential district, industrial, and park. The petitioner is asking to rezone because of an interest in further developing the property. The things that I would direct your attention to is that if you did rezone this to an R0 multi-family residence, the following uses would be allowed. Any uses that are permitted in the residential districts, colleges and academic instruction, mortuaries or funeral homes, business or professional offices, studios, clubs, antennas and towers, conditional uses that would be allowed would be hotels, motels, transient accommodations, research facilities, provided there with an enclosed building, home occupations, mining, which seems to be allowed in every zone, antennas and towers, and then there would be allowed accessory structures. If you do, if you do make a recommendation to amend the comprehensive plan or rezone this area, the requested action would depend on the amendment, which was already granted to the comprehensive plan, so it would be in agreement, and that the requested plan is in compliance with other provisions in our comprehensive plan that regulate our future development in this area. The, and then taking into account the surrounding areas and what impacts might be expected.
I might have staked earlier, and I thought that's where we were at that point.
Right.
So, I so moved.
Okay, is there, first of all, just, does anyone want to address the commissioners on this scene? Okay. And no questions from any of the commissioners?
We don't have a concept yet of what that development might look like.
You know, geez, see, Mr. Sales has left. There would be some additional, well, the development would be outside of this flood plain. The sales cabin would be here, the development would be pretty close, pushed as close to the road as possible.
In that triangle?
Yeah, in this triangle here. It would include, and then this house has been, I believe, sold and moved already to another location. And it would add, potentially add, it, some people would transfer to that facility, and it would add a few jobs as well.
Okay, any other questions? Yes?
I just want to put on the record that the changing in the zoning does not limit the owner of the property to what's just been discussed. Changes in the zoning, that's why the list of things that would be permitted uses here is really relevant to look at and think how that would interact with both waterways and industrial across the street, and the park up the road, and things like that. Because once this happens, that property can be redeveloped in any way consistent with these uses in the future. So you shouldn't make a decision on the rezoning just because there's a possible proposed plan to put a research facility there. This will make that possible if they choose to go that way, but they could just as easily decide to put a, an academic construction facility there, or, you know, anything that's on this list. It's just, you should just decide whether these types of uses are consistent with the neighborhood.
So we're just really voting whether or not to make it more flexible?
Exactly.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification.
And is this a recommendation also to...
Yes, this is a recommendation to the council.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bremner. A second from Commissioner Nelson. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. The next item is to consider an enforcement, forbearance, or grace period, terminology there, request from Innovative Housing Concepts, Leaning Tree LLC, to develop an apartment complex with approximately two-thirds of the required parking and the other one-third to be added pending a parking study and further review by the planning commission.
So this is somewhat of an unusual request. We don't usually get requests on time, timing kinds of things. It's usually either we do it, or we don't do it, or can we do it differently than the ordinance allows. So I would just, I did frame this as a variance. However, in discussing with Mr. Byrum, we agreed that this should be treated more as an enforcement, forbearance, or grace period, and then if the planning commission so desires to grant, if they granted that, they would have a certain, the petitioner would have a certain amount of time to either put in the required parking, or prove that a variance could be, or obtain a variance, I guess I should just say, just make it simple that way. So what they're asking for, though, is a delay from implementing our sections 11.32, subdivision 5A, and 11.70 subdivisions H2, which would require them to put in 94 parking stalls based on a 42-unit apartment development. And this is located at 901 16th Avenue Northeast, Austin, Minnesota. The apartment development, if you're familiar with it, is near the Hormel Institute across the street, where we've had some rezonings into R0 to facilitate that development. The petitioner, again, is asking to delay the construction of approximately one-third of the required parking stalls pending the occupancy of the building and a parking study. One of the things, or several things, should be considered, the length of time that would be needed to conduct the parking study, how the neighborhood might be impacted in the interim, the ability of the developer to add stalls to the project if they are ultimately required, what guarantees they might have, maybe in the interim, what alternate options might be available, or things that might impact their need for additional parking. And then specifically, there should be a time period developed to determine whether they should add the required parking or obtain a variance. The, I think the last time I spoke, well, earlier, we spoke before I came in today, but when this petition was made, I believe the petitioner was thinking it would take a year to get the building up, get occupancy, and then be able to do a study. Now, we were just discussing what level of occupancy would be necessary to really get a good idea of what, what parking they would need. I guess it's my feeling that really there should be a specific time limit, and you kind of should just work with what, what you have maybe, but I'll let Mr. Wagner kind of argue the other side if, if he wants, but, and I think that also you have the ability to determine too whether additional time would, would merit, whether it would merit additional time if there was a lower occupancy, and what type of occupancy should be necessary to do the parking study.
So based on full occupancy at some point, is there adequate space to provide adequate parking?
Well, and we're saying, we don't know, yeah, should it be based on full occupancy? Should their parking study be based on full occupancy, or should they do a study within a certain time period?
I think his question is a little different.
Okay, maybe I didn't understand.
If there's space, is there enough land? Yeah.
Yes, yes, there is.
Okay.
Yes, they're, they're working out their plan so that they would be able to add the additional parking spaces if necessary. If they don't have to add the additional parking space, it was mentioned to me that they would like to do more green space and more community, more open space area.
So based on the number of units that would be built?
Yeah, it's, it's anticipated, I think it was 42 units.
Correct.
And our requirement is 2.25 stalls per unit. And we, you know, one of the things we also discussed is that we really don't have a, a robust public transportation system here. That might, you know, be one of the reasons, or one of the things to consider. I guess in the future, if we look at the variance, at this point, we're just trying to determine whether they should have additional time to look at the matter more closely.
From what I've read, this development is strictly for the Hormel Institute employees, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that would work exactly, but...
That's the intent, that the 42-unit three-story complex would be occupied by Hormel Institute.
But if you don't, if they don't hire enough people to fill it, will they then use it for other people?
I would say that they're very optimistic they're going to fill that building, but I can't, I can't answer that.
Yeah, okay. The other question might, might reply to the actual institute itself. When it expanded and everything, were the parking requirements sufficient for this extra 42 employees, so to speak, that might be coming or more, depending how many employees are in the apartment house?
You know, they may allow parking by the apartment residents in other parking areas surrounding, privately owned, but under our ordinance, we're not allowed to consider that as sufficient.
No, what I'm, what I'm, my thought process is just if the building itself was designed with enough parking for all the employees when they're working, then we really shouldn't have too big a problem.
There was, there was a parking variance approved for the institute, is my, I believe.
So they already short.
May, may I?
You could, yeah, you could consider, yeah, yeah, go ahead, and if you want to come up and speak.
Sure. Well, that's a, that's a good question, and the architects, RSP, have felt for quite some time that the, the city ordinance for number of parking stalls per unit is high, much higher than more other areas, Rochester and Minneapolis and what have you. So they did conform with the current city ordinance when they, they built the institute, and they did do a parking study. Don't quote me on this, but Craig Jones had said that they, the actual use of their parking was .6 of something. I, I don't know if they based it on square footage, or the number of people that it was designed to accommodate doing their daily job, but what the institute and the foundation have found out is that many of the scientists and staff, about nine or 10 per scientist that come to Austin, many of them don't have cars, nor do they even have a driver's license. Hence, the location of the, of the new apartment complex right across the street from the institute. The RSP architects, and I'm part of Innovative Housing Concepts, were very confident that the 1.5 units, or parking stalls per unit, is going to be plenty. But this request in my letter to Holly was more to just allow us some time to, to build the building and build 1.5 stalls per, per unit, and then once the, the facility reaches a certain occupancy level, do a proof of parking, and if it turns out that we need 2.25 stalls per unit, the Hormel Foundation will commit and will send a letter to the planning commission, committing that they would, will build the full 2.25 requirement.
Well, I respect your thoughtful approach to parking and the design of, of the space. I don't know that one year gives us enough information on the results of the parking study. Could there be consideration for maybe an annual parking study that can be then reviewed by the commission to see if the prediction still holds?
Of course. And, you know, the hope is that there's going to be another inverted L added to this 42-unit complex in a couple of years, which of course means additional parking will be added. So given the size of the property and the, the vision that they have, you know, a lot of this could change. But short term, it's $100, $102,000 more that they would have to spend upfront, and then they'd no longer have the flexibility to do some things with the plaza, or, or plantings, or, you know, more attractive green space.
If they're going to build another 42-unit apartment house, is that, is there already room on the current institute for that many more employees, or are they going to be adding to institute again?
Uh, right now, with the plat, the way it is, the, the east border of the, of the Phase 1 is not too far east of that building line. Between, you know, with the L, you understand where the institute is, this way, across the street. So right now, all we're dealing with and designing for is the current east boundary line, and we'll have to wait and see as, as the concept develops, what will happen, how the, how the project might grow.
So how do we word it?
Well, I was just, yeah, I guess I'm wondering if we should put a time parameter on any motion, or what stipulations, yeah.
I think that the principal issue that is before you tonight is to give guidance to both the developer and the staff as far as the, the timing and, and strictness of the application or enforcement of the parking ordinance. So really, just tonight, the question is, are you comfortable? Do you have enough assurances and security that, that they have the capacity to build the additional parking if it's later required, to allow them to proceed with building the development with approximately two-thirds of the, of the paving for the parking lot completed, and then some reasonable amount of time to come back, study the issue, determine whether they have to build the rest of it, which is the requirement, you're never lifting the actual requirement away, you're just lifting the enforcement of it to a later date, or to come back to you with, with studies and evidence and say, now we need a variance, and this is the factual basis for our variance, we've done the parking study, we only need another 10 spots instead of another 30-some spots, you know, that sort of thing. Because the way that the general system works is, once these things start to get built, the staff has to enforce all the requirements that are in, in the ordinance unless there's an official variance in place. So what you're going to say, if you approve this, and what the council's going to say if they adopt your recommendation, is everyone on this end is comfortable that in the future, when you say, no, you have to build the parking lot, that they will actually be capable of doing that. It's just giving them some time to work.
So are we granting a variance with an expiration date?
No, it's not, and the variance, that's why I talked to Holly about, maybe we should avoid using the term variance, because variance suggests that it's a permanent arrangement that now follows with the land pretty much indefinitely. What we're talking about, that's why we're using the term forbearance, you're telling the staff forbear enforcing the parking lot requirement beyond what they've agreed to do at, at first, for some period of time, and so that's why your question is, should we put a period of time in there? Yes. At the end of which, they have to either build the rest of the parking lot, or request a variance, or do something else so we can handle this in a more official, permanent, long-term fashion. The alternative is for them either to build it out of compliance, and then have the staff have to be enforcing them and hassling them, or for them to build it and then decide later that we really don't need it, and then tear it up to return it to, to green space, which would, which would be a waste of resources. So I respect the fact that you have a developer here that at least came in and said, I'm willing to do it, but how about let's see if we really need it before I do it, because there might be better and smarter things to use with the resources if I don't have to do it eventually, and he's willing to work with you. So right now, you're saying, what's a reasonable time? What sort of security mechanisms do you want to have in place so you know that the developer has the resources to build? And he has suggested that the foundation may send a letter saying they'll commit the resources to build the rest of the parking lot if it's needed. That may be good enough security for you to know that, that there's money behind that. And then what are the terms at which this will either come back to Holly, or come back to this group, or in some other way, come to a final resolution? Is it a, a study based upon two-thirds of the occupancy, because you have two-thirds of the parking lot? Is it a study that's based upon a date certain, where whatever the occupancy is on that date, we take a look at how many units are filled, and how many parking spots those units are doing? Those are the kinds of guidance that the staff's really looking for at this stage.
And the proof of parking study that would be done, our architects have done several of them. So there are established criteria... So there are established criteria upon which to base it, because you have the variables we've discussed, the occupancy level, the number of units. And, and, and we could follow up with Holly and, and provide her with, with some, some sort of plan and criteria that we would follow by the end of two thousand sixteen to do the study.
I understand you say that the foundation would write a letter committing to it?
Yes.
Okay, I think, to me, that takes care of the issue, whether it's done or not.
May I ask for that as a condition, just so that it gets done?
Sure.
I would think that, you know, even if you were to say, once the building is fifty percent full, you did a parking study, that should give us a pretty good understanding of where it is at that point. Whether than waiting for a year or whatever time period, that fifty percent would give us a better feel. Who knows what, the time period, how many would actually be in there?
Well, it seems like we might need some sort of a trigger to find out when to hold the property.
Would you be comfortable with saying December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, or fifty percent occupancy, whichever comes first?
Sure.
Commissioners, that's agreeable?
An initial study, and then going forward, I think, you know, I also have the idea of review.
Review when it's full.
That sounds very acceptable. And, and again, to repeat, then, then it would be up to Innovative Housing Concepts and our developing team to come to the, to the planning commission and then to the council to request for a formal variance.
Okay, who wants to wordsmith this one?
I was going to say, anybody who wants to put that into a formal motion.
I'll take a stab at it. So I move that we recommend to the city council an enforcement forbearance on the parking requirements at this development until December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, or fifty percent occupancy of the building, whichever comes first. And that is dependent upon receiving a letter from the Hormel Foundation assuring that they have the financial capacity to build the additional parking. And when do we need the letter? By the end of this month? Is that okay?
That would be fine. Perfect.
By April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Helly, a second by Mr. Remner. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Could I just make one footnote? I don't get this opportunity very often. But I'd like the council and our zoning official to, to consider or reconsider our zoning ordinance related to this parking issue. We, we want to attract new businesses. We want to grow Austin. We want to enhance living options for our residents. And the two point two-five stalls per unit is very restrictive.
Do you know how that compares with other, our communities?
Rochester, Mankato, about every municipality in the Twin Cities that I know of, it's one point five. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I can provide the planning commission as much information on that as they want. So just contact me if you have any questions.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a sign appeal. This is to consider a request for the denial of a sign permit to Bridgette Bell Richard, Acclaim Dance Studio, thirteen hundred eighteenth Avenue Northwest, and Precision Signs, two zero nine Main Street South, Austin, Minnesota, for the proposed placement of an additional sign on an exterior wall or canopy. This action is pursuant to City Code four point five zero, Schedule Four, one B, limiting a business to one wall or canopy sign in a B two community business district.
All right, as you noted, this petition was brought by Bridgette Bell Richard and Precision Signs. Bridgette also owns Acclaim Dance Studio. I believe she was located in the Oak Park Mall earlier and has now moved her business to the former Cashwise Building, which is located in a B two community business district. As part of her move, she is placing some signs to advertise her business at that location. Our ordinance, okay, I see I have something incorrect on here. Our ordinance allows only two signs, or allows one sign facing a public right-of-way per side of the building. This one would have what I would count as two signs. There's one located on the wall of the building. There's one located here, which is compliant. And then there was an additional silhouettes asked to be placed on the canopy, or we can also consider that as part of the wall here. The code that applies is Section four point five zero, Schedule Four, Section one B. This is considered a variance. So the council, or the planning commission should take into consideration the variance conditions, which are whether the sign request is due to unusual conditions pertaining to that specific situation, whether the sign would violate any statutes, rules, or regulations, whether the sign would be objectional to adjacent property owners, whether there would be, be any adverse effect on any residential property. There is none in that area. Whether the sign would be in keeping with the general character of the surrounding area. And I don't have any additional pictures, but there are other buildings or other businesses in that location that have similar signs on the wall. They don't have the canopy signs at this point. I would ask the council to consider that the variance is in harmony, if granted, with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code, that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision, that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, that the plight of the landowner is not, is due to circumstances unique to the property, that the variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district affected where, where the land is located, and will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. The petitioner is asking that she be allowed to add this additional silhouette to the canopy just to give more visibility to that business. As you can see, there, the sign, the lower sign is kind of tucked in under the canopy. And that was, that was her concern.
Okay, any questions from the commissioners?
Would the silhouette be lit at all?
No.
Which side of that building is this? That is this, the west side?
Facing the parking lot.
Okay.
And that, to me, it does, looks like a part of the sign.
It, you know, it does fit with what she's advertising, I would agree.
And it's right there with the sign. It's not like she's trying to put another sign in a different spot in the building.
Right, it's, it's in the same general location. I just never know what people are going to come up with. You know, there could be something entirely different with the next person that comes along, so.
And it is, it's under the allowable signage, signs-wise, right?
The, yeah, that's an error, actually. I'm glad you mentioned that. The, this was copied over from the, I believe, the Sears, sorry about that. The percentage coverage. It's actually, it meets the coverage.
It what?
It, it doesn't exceed the coverage limit.
That's what I thought. I move to grant the variance.
Okay, does anyone want to speak to, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I had another picture to show.
If you could just state your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Jenny Kittleson, I work for, for Precision Signs. I had another couple of photos to show kind of the visibility issues with the current sign. This one shows that from a distance, you can't very well see the sign during the day because it's under the canopy, whereas you can see this Sherwin-Williams very nicely because there's sunlight shining directly on it. Also, the building angles in on the side, so, once it's closer to where it angles in, you really can't see the sign at all from here, whereas this would be very visible up here. You can also, again, see Sherwin-Williams back there, but you can't see any signage here.
The canopy was the, cars would drive underneath it to pick up groceries at Cashwise.
Yeah, it is.
That's why it's there.
Mm-hmm. So it's kind of an unusual building architectural issue with visibility of their sign.
Yeah, so the, the, the sign itself is basically shaded or out of kind of view there, it looks like, then, in some cases, depending on the... Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion, Mr. Remner, to approve.
I'll second.
Second, was that, Nelson? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the last item on our agenda is to consider a request from Rolling Green Fencing, twenty-four zero eight Fourth Street Northwest and Earl and San...
Sorry? Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're not in the loop. We actually amended the agenda to remove that particular, that's, that one's out.
I should have mentioned, that was, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Fencing, yes, fence appeal, Earl and Sandra Davis, seven oh one Ninth Avenue Southwest, Austin, Minnesota, for a fence appeal which limits fences constructed adjacent to corner lots or front lots to thirty inches in height unless substantially open. Then four feet or five feet with council approval. A solid or opaque fence may be constructed, but must be set back twenty-five feet in the yard, in front yard and twenty, twelve point five feet in the side yard. In an R one residential district, the petitioner wishes to replace the existing fence in the same location. Said action is pursuant to Austin City Code, Section four point seven zero, subdivision five A.
Yes, this is brought by Earl and Sandra Davis, seven oh one Ninth Avenue Southwest, and that's the location of the property that the fence, the subject property, where the fence would be located. In your materials, there should be this image from our base map showing the property. Is somebody here from, is that your property? Is that, this is...
It's southeast.
Okay. It's southeast instead of southwest. The frontage here, the, the actual required frontage now is sixty feet, and that would be in part of the consideration with our current ordinance. Obviously, this lot, they have approximately fifty feet of frontage. And I drew this line in... I drew this line in here to show where they would have to locate the fence now, if they put in a new fence, to be compliant with our ordinance. This is where the existing fence exists. So if traffic's coming up this way and they're backing out, there's no fence on this side. Or, you know, if something's coming this way and they're going that way, they're, they're, they have about fifteen feet of clearance here. And I, is my understanding that this fence has existed in this location for some time? So the big issues that I would look at or recommend that you look at would be visibility issues, perhaps like the time it's been there and any issues that maybe have existed. And then that there's a fifteen-foot space from the fence to the road, and there's no sidewalk on that side of the property. So you wouldn't necessarily have a lot of foot traffic on that area either. Do you have any questions?
I was just wondering what's being proposed to replace it?
It should be going in the same place. Okay, I'll let him show you what he's going to do with that.
Come on up, state your name and address, please.
Earl Davis at seven zero one Ninth Avenue Southeast. The fence that I'd like, what I wanted to do, this is an old wood fence. The house was built in fifty-three. Fence, I don't know when it's there. I bought the house like twelve years ago. Rather than repair the old fence, I went to Rolling Green and I wanted to put up a modern, plastic, high-end one. And it's fairly expensive to do those two fences, it's nearly six thousand if they take out the old, put in the new. So the question I mainly had was, I just want to put the fence right where it always has been. And the visibility part, from the end of the current fence, out here to the corner, I think was like a hundred and, like, like a hundred and twenty-three feet, something like that, where there is no fence down to that corner. The current setback on this from the curb is, on the piece that's really in question, it's fourteen feet back from the curb. And I'd just like to replace it in that same spot. But what I don't, what I didn't want to do and why this kind of came up is I didn't think there probably was this north-sided, I didn't think there'd be any problem. But you see, there was never, this two-block area has never had a sidewalk. And when the, both Ninth Avenue and Sixth Street, both are in the process, they were just re-tore out and redone. They're about ready to put another, the second layer on, I guess. But the sidewalk question came up during that redo, and it was rejected. There was not going to be a sidewalk. So that fourteen foot would be a problem if there was a sidewalk, of course, I understand. But I just wanted to, before I spent the money to replace, I kind of wanted to do it in two stages because of the cost. So I thought I'd do this north end of the, the lot first. But I wanted to make sure I didn't have a problem when it came time to do the other one, because it wouldn't look very good with the new plastic and an old wood. So that's kind of what my question was.
And I would just add that in discussions about sidewalk, you can see that the sidewalk typically is, is in the right-of-way, which would be outside of the block line here, which is the boundaries of the property. So a sidewalk here, you know, would be outside of this, this blue line. And it looks like the fence, if it remains in the same spot, would be right on the edge of that. I'm not saying that he wouldn't have to remove it to allow construction, but it would be potentially, potentially workable.
These two streets that intercept each other, the Sixth Street Southeast and the Ninth Avenue Southeast, these, these aren't... I have lived in that area previously and I have worked in that area and, and on a number of occasions. And it was always my impression that this area, these two streets, aren't very active thoroughfares.
No, they're kind of dead end. Ninth Avenue going west dead ends at a half-block or so. And Sixth Street, in a sense, kind of dead ends at the next block down. You can turn left, but that's all you can do. So it's not a very high traffic.
Do you have any other questions?
Has the city had any reports of issues with the fences that it's existed for many years? Nothing?
I have no record of any complaints.
Okay. Any other questions for either Holly or Mr. Davis? If not, I will...
I move that we grant the, it's just a variance, I can't remember.
Yeah, I should probably just clarify that the reason he has the twelve-and-a-half-foot setback is because he wanted a solid fence, a solid six-foot-high fence versus a, a chain link.
There's currently a, a over-five-foot fence there. That's what it is currently. But you can't buy sometimes exactly what you had, and the... But you can't buy sometimes exactly what you had, and this fence that they're wanting me to have is a six-foot fence.
I move that we grant the petitioner the request to replace the fence in the exact same place, which requires a variance.
Okay. A motion tried by Commissioner...
I did make the motion.
I did. Yes, and second by Commissioner Nelson. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. That's all. Do you have anything else for us, Holly?
I have nothing further.
Okay. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Remner, second by Commissioner Nelson, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed.
Good.